Test Test one two Ooh That's This is the test stuff Yeah One two three
...
Is there a guy behind that? Don't look behind us all over again. Don't look behind the curtain. It's no?
It's wizard. It's the wizard.
Take my heels together and go home?
I didn't wear my red shoes.
Shirt, John. Nobody wants to put their front?
Good morning, everyone.
Hannah's in the front.
I'm gonna let you talk first, I'll start.
Good morning, everybody. This is a quick PSA. As y'all will know, Fort Carter Base is in need of volunteers. It's under way. Since we have a captive audience, and we have people who are eager to always help Fort Carter, via physical labor or donations. Please be advised, we'll be meeting here for Fort Carter Base at 1:30 in this room. If you want to make a donation, you can make one today, tomorrow, when you feel like it. Spitters is here in charge of community council. If you have any particular questions, we are in need of continual volunteers. So, think about it. Please join us. Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. We just have a couple of housekeeping items before we begin the meeting, the town hall. Before we open the floor to questions, we're going to present the project, the need, all of that kind of stuff. And that way, everyone can be informed with the questions that they want to ask. We ask everyone to come to the mic for your questions. We want to make sure we give each member, each member's question, the time and attention it deserves. Instead of, you know, we kind of, we start out that way, and then we start, you know, shouting from the back. So, to be respectful of everyone, we ask that you come up to the mic. We ask that all the questions pertaining to this subject, and unfortunately, if we do get off topic, we're gonna have to cut it off and bring it back to where we need to be. We want this meeting to be productive and as smooth as possible, so that we get to our end goal and still have the rest of our wonderful Saturday to spend with our friends and family. We don't want to cut anybody off, but we don't need to be here all day. The goal is to figure out how best to get the funds for this project. We're not here to decide whether or not this project, to do this project, but how we need to proceed. So, with that, Charlene is gonna give us the scope and everything of the project.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. How are you?
Good morning.
Do we have smiles on there? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is my first town hall. So, excuse me if I make any mistakes, or I maybe stutter, or, you know, whatever. I just want you to know that I am here for a very good cause. And to explain some of the things that I've seen, questions on Facebook. First off is, I provided the scope of work, and I also provided the profit in last year-to-date fiscal year, which I'm sure, Warren, you'll probably ask. So, it's from October 1st to today. And it has payroll, and has all the expenses on there, and it shows you that we have a profit so far of $18,000. I also provided the costs of our rooms, of what we do during the week and what they are on the weekends. And with this said, after the work is done on the motel, the prices will be increased, so we can recoup some of that money that we're spending on the motel. Now, here is what the scope is, and I'm sure you'll have questions on it. I'm sure you'll ask for more details. It is as generic as I could make it, because as we go and do things, there could be change orders, there could be changes, and there could be things that we have to look at. Del Rio doesn't always have the supplies that we would need. We are still looking into different materials, which I talked to John about. And then we can find out maybe from the historical society if we can use composite wood instead of just other wood, which would last longer. And if that is the case, the cost could be a little bit more. So, I'm just giving you guys an update on some of the things I'm still looking at while we talk about doing this. So, structural repairs. We already replaced a support beam that was decayed and falling apart when I first got here. That was on the agenda and memo, had been talking about it for quite a long time, and that was already completed. But there are two more support beams that need to be replaced. I really encourage everybody here today to go walk the motel. Instead of just putting things on Facebook, because I don't think a lot of people have really looked at it. I'd like you to go on the upstairs, I'd like you to go on the bottom stairs. And if you want me to take you for a tour, I'll be more than happy to after we're all done in here. So, there is a support beam that's at the very end of Bullis. It's the corner, and we are sagging, because it's splayed and it's decayed. I don't know how long it's been like that, but it didn't get like that overnight. It's been like that for a while to get that bad. And I have pictures on the back. I don't know if it does it justice. I took them, but you can see the damage that it's done. And then there's another support beam on Patton Hall. It's like the third one in, which is also decayed and falling apart. That's a safety issue. Because if we don't know how long that's been there, and we don't know how long that's gonna support, and you can already see it sagging on one side, that can't be good. Then, on the upstairs, I asked questions about when the outdoor carpet was put up there. A lot of people don't know when. It had got done some time ago. And part of the tongue and groove is still there, which looks good. But then you've got this carpet out there, which the tongue and groove at some point in time was replaced with plywood. That's not what the historical building is supposed to have. It's supposed to have tongue and groove. And the carpet that's out there is not even outdoor carpet. It's just carpet. So, if you go up there, it's kind of gross. It's got stains on it, it holds mold, it holds moisture, it's filthy. And can you imagine if you were gonna go rent, and you're going on the top floor, and the first thing you see is that carpet out there? Is that what we want to promote? I don't think so. And at the end of the day, we want people to have positive things to say about the motel when they leave. But if you're going there, again, the only people that we can expect maybe that would not care are workers. I mean, maybe families might not like that. I wouldn't like it. So, that's one of the things we need to change. We also have some decay and broken stuff that are on the awnings up there that we need to replace. The windows around there, if you go look, they're awful on par. If you put your finger in it, it just crumbles. So, it needs to be taken out, needs to be repaired. And so, I have that on here. Exterior maintenance. Paint, banisters, porch, rail, soffit, and fascia as part of the exterior maintenance. Remove damaged and decayed wood and trim around exterior windows. Cock paint, window trim after removal. Remove dead wiring and organize exposed current wiring for a cleaner appearance. So, if you go outside and you look all along under the porch, there's just wire that's there that should be gone. It's not doing any use, it's dead wire. I don't know another word to say. And then along with that, if you look at the lights there, they're all rusted, they're, they need to be replaced. I'll say it like that. Now, I kind of worded this wrong, so let me rephrase. Under the staircase, we're gonna put an enclosure. It's not a storage room, my mistake. But it's an enclosure to conceal the utilities. So, when you go and you see the staircase, under the need, there's all this exposed wire. And it's very inciting, for one. And what if kids were there? And they're renting, and kids are playing, and they're curious, and they go to play under there? We don't need them to be touching any of that, because we don't know what could happen. So, really, it needs to be enclosed. Now, with that enclosure, it would still be painted the same colors as the historical. Russell has given me all the colors that are supposed to be on that building. So, it would be done exactly the way we're supposed to do it, but that would be painted. So, it would just be aesthetically pleasing. And then I told you about the support beams, which, you know, are at Patton Hall and Bullis Hall. Flooring replacement at Patton Hall. Remove the old stained carpeting on the upper level. Replace plywood, tongue and groove with 1x4 planks and stain to match. I know that Sharon mentioned that we could maybe look into getting composite material for that. So, I asked her to look into that for me, if that's something we could do, because then the longevity would last quite a long time. But it would be a little bit more expensive. But at the same time, it would be better if it's gonna last 20 more years than what maybe yellow pine that's treated. And then, of course, the same with Bullis Hall. Remove old stained carpeting on the upper level, put the tongue and groove one-by-four planks and stain to match. And then, of course, power wash. I know I did get something from Constance Kilgore, who talked to the Texas Historical Society about power washing the stone. So it would be done very lightly, with warm water, no chemicals. The rest of the wood and everything would be normal power washing. And then, on the back, now, to save on costs, some of our vendors that bid wanted to bring in a porta potties. Well, we can provide a hotel room that they can use while they're here working, so it won't cost them, it won't cost us more money. And we will provide a roll-off as well. So we don't have to pay them for the debris that they're gonna haul up. And they can put it in our landfill, because there's nothing gonna be that will be put in there. I don't believe, but I will ask Bill up, because he's the one that's certified. And then, and like I said, the power wash, there's patios and walls. And I explained that it would be warm water on the mason area in the hotel stone. So with that said, we have three bids. Some have extra information in there, and I did ask them to rebid, but some of them are not gonna be that much more. It's about $38,000 on one, $37,000 on the other, and one was about $98,000. Yeah, it was quite, it was, and there was only maybe four items on that. That was a little bit different than what my scope is. So I would, I got the name of the vendor through Amistad Bank, who they highly recommend, because they use them for building houses all over Del Rio, maybe other places too, I don't know, but I just know he came highly recommended. He's a retired fireman, has his own business, and all of these vendors that have been, are bonded, and all have the insurance that they need. Just in case you were wondering. I don't know if there's any other information that you guys would like, but that's what I have. But I do want to address a couple of questions that were on Facebook. It was asked, why during the election? This really has nothing to do with the election. It's just things that have to be done. It's a safety issue. If you go upstairs too, on that second floor, and you pull that carpet back, underneath the ACs, that wood is rotting. I don't know how long it's gonna take before it rots. Do we really want to find out until somebody gets hurt, and then we get sued for that? And I'm just being honest. I mean, it's been like that for a long time. So I really, you know, encourage everybody to go walk the motel. It is a moneymaker. Just like our RV park. They compete with each other, and the RV park goes just as well as the motel, sometimes better. But, and we're also gonna be putting money into the RV park as well. But we have three things that right now make us money. RV park, motel, and our hunting. And our venues are starting to make us money, because we've been renting them out a lot. If you have any questions, I don't have anything else unless the board has questions.
Yeah. I'm gonna let the board also speak. So for those that came in late, I just want to reiterate that when we get to the question portion, to please come up to the to the microphone, so that we are respectful of each other, and yeah, that's that. So what I'd like to do is just go, we'll start with Memo, and see if you have anything you want to add or say with this.
Just a reminder, I was, I learned this week, we've had two special assessments in the last eight years. The last special assessment that we assessed was in 2016, when we needed a trash truck. That was the first one. The second one was in 2020. And I believe that might have been the last time the special assessment was collected for taxes. We haven't, the taxes are not being paid out of our regular funds now. So it's nothing unusual, other than we haven't done it in five years, that we might do it. So that's why we're as, one of the favorite words that runs, that runs the fort is transparency. Well, here we are, being transparent. The motel needs to be fixed. Is it gonna collapse tomorrow? No. But rest assured that every penny that's collected is going into the motel. As members, we all benefit from the motel in the sense that when we have family or friends come, we can, we get a discounted rate as a member. It is paid for, thus whatever money is made out of the motel comes back into the fort. And we're all, and we're all, and we're all the benefactors of the fort, all of us, if you're a member.
I do want to add one thing. I did want to add one thing. Travis had given me an application to fill out for tax state credit that could possibly help with some of that cost. So I am going, I am reading it, and I am going to apply for that. And thank you, Travis, for sending that to me. So we are gonna utilize that to the best of our ability. What would that? Let's, yeah.
Let's open them.
You have anything?
I'll use my mic. So I have a couple of observations. I personally have gone to different times to to look at what the problem is and what previous problem was that we fixed. And frankly, I was appalled. My wife and I do some traveling, and we love to stay in old motels and hotels. And I was appalled at the condition, particularly with regard to the issues that we're focusing on right now. In addition to that, I've heard, I made little tally marks, and I think I got them all. I've heard Ms. Cavender say that this was a safety issue at least three times. And frankly, that was the first thought that entered my mind when I went to look at the condition. Mr. Guzman, I don't know how you can sit here and say to anybody, that is it gonna fall tomorrow? No. I don't believe that. You get the right weight on that part of the decking, and it could very well shift and possibly fall. So my observation is that I think this is a lot of discussion about the details of a project that, and I'm not blaming anyone, I'm not blaming anyone on the board, and certainly not our general manager, because it seems to me that we scramble at every turn to find the money that we need to keep this place up and get it back to its condition that I remember as a child. But this is a safety issue. And the last thing, we, we had a hard enough time finding an insurance underwriter to provide insurance for this place, the mandatory insurance that we have to carry. And I can only imagine if we were to have an incident where someone is hurt because of the condition of the motel, that, of course, we would have a claim. And at that point, with the insurance industry being what it is today, it would be, it could be impossible to find insurance coverage that we so sorely need, instead of trying to be self-insured, which would be absolutely impossible with the condition that we're in today. And again, I have to say, I'm not complaining, and I'm not not saying to you that, or anyone here, that this should have been done a long time ago, but quite frankly, it should have been done a long time ago. It should have been fixed a long time ago. And although this may not be right on point with this particular discussion that I'm saying, that I'm talking about, but the entire time that I've been on the board, we've done nothing but try to undo what either was done, or what should have done, should have been done in the last 10 to 15 years around this place. And quite frankly, I'm tired of it. I think we need to move on. If a special assessment is necessary, my estimation, it's not gonna cost any one of you more than $20 to $25, $30. Now, I can't, I can't commit to that, but I'm telling you that we are, when special assessments are done, they're sent to current members, FRMs and charter members. So when you spread the cost of what we believe we need somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000, $45,000, it's not a whole lot of money to each member. And certainly, you didn't ask me to say this today, but quite frankly, I think we need to bump the assessments to at least twice what they are. Hire a team of people that will collect all the money that certain members are not paying. And get this place back to where it's flush again financially. And if we do that, we could make it beautiful again. I mean, there's a lot of beautiful aspects of the fort now. With these details of what we're discussing today, I want to tell you, in my opinion, I don't think we even need a town hall. This should be something that the general manager should just go ahead and do. And if it requires a special assessment, put it on the agenda and vote on it. And then you all can raise hell if you want to. But this is a safety issue. I've been a lawyer for over 42 years, and I've both defended as well as prosecuted claims for people in situations like this. This is a no-brainer. Look how long it's been in this condition. Look how long it's been ignored. So if I get a chance to vote on this, I think you already know what my vote will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Hey, Tony said it pretty well. I think, I think people are gonna have a, first of all, I think it'd be important to say that we all understand the frustrations. We're members too. We understand the frustrations of the deficiencies within the fort, the RV park, the hotel, whatever. Everybody, everybody has something that they really enjoy about the fort, and it's really easy to hyper-focus on that one thing and say, it looks like crap, or whatever it is. It's everywhere, okay? And you know, it's my belief that it would probably be in the neighborhood of $10 million to get this place up and where it used to be. And revitalize this place, and we just simply don't have that money, and we probably never will. But I think there's a couple of things to point out, kind of piggybacking off of what Tony said. We've had dramatic increases in insurance and taxes. We're working on the tax side. We believe we're in the right to reduce our taxes down to next to nothing. There used to be a special assessment every single year for taxes. But, but the law says for the use and benefit of the association, so even the motel has a use and a benefit to the association, so it would be a tax write-off. I believe that our taxes should be almost nothing, which would save us $135,000 a year. And the other thing is insurance. Our insurance is currently, I think the first year last year might have been 250. Was it 250 this year? Was it two, or was it 280 last year? 250? It was, it was a quarter million dollars. It did used to be a quarter million dollars. So if you think about that in the terms of being spread out over about a six-year period, we have an increase in roughly $150,000, $60,000. Whatever $5 that your membership due goes up, that's about $45,000 a year for the association, okay? So even if the maximum would have been applied to the dues necessary, dues that could have been added on through the raisin assessments, it wouldn't even have caught up with simply taxes and insurance. So we, as I've said many times, the association is always running in the hole. It just simply does not bring in enough money. And that's not all negative and down in the pits. For the first time, when I got here, the budget was $3,900 for advertising, marketing for the fort. That budget's been increased. There are volunteers slaving away right now, a few of them sitting in this room, to help with marketing of the association. There's gonna be a billboard on Highway 90, and maybe more. Charlene is working the five. There's, there's, there is a big play right now to move and allow, you know, make more money come into the association, much more in the manner that it used to be. At least that's our hope. We gotta try. Because I think every board, and this board, since we've said it too, but every board before us, it's like, hey, we just don't have the money. We just don't have the money. But there's never been a real movement since when I was a kid, Alamo Village kind of perished. There's never been a real movement to get more people to spend money within Kenny County. And we're focused on that. We want to work on that. And so I know that that's some, that's some statistical numbers, like conceptually, that may be kind of hard to completely understand, but but, but please hear us when we say that, when I say that just insurance and tax increases alone haven't even, those increases have gone up so fast that they superseded the raises on your dues every month that we, in the manner that we couldn't even keep up. So now, if you go, if you come back from that and you go, well, groceries have gone up, gas has gone up, labor's gone up, insurance has gone up, FICA's gone up, whatever. We don't even, we can't even raise the assessments enough to keep up with that. And these are not within our control. So I think it's really important that that maybe y'all understand before, I don't look at Facebook too much, but but I know there's been some stuff said on there, and it's really easy to jump conclusions, and we understand that. But the money just simply doesn't exist, and it's not this board's fault. It's not any one person's fault. Can there be better management? Yeah, there's always gonna be a percentage. Is it 40%? No, it's not. And even if it was 10% better, that'd only be $200,000 a year. And that wouldn't solve all of our problems. So and I'm not saying that that's a dollar-for-dollar percentage, but but please understand that when you look at the history of how things have gone up through our economic factors of of the cost of running a business, plus insurance and taxes, just simply, we're already in the red. And, and so it, when you look at our budget, you say, well, there's all this money sitting there. Well, yeah, but it doesn't, it's just not dollar-for-dollar. And so just keep that in mind today, please, and and once again, you know, like Memo said, Charlene said, the RV park, the motel make us money. And so I want, I want everybody to think about the fact that we're in the first quarter, we're at $18, $18,000, I believe, $19,000 in profit on the motel. So if we did that over four quarters, let's just say we're at $80,000 in profit for the motel. That's $10 a month per member, okay? Per membership, alright? So if we shut the hotel down because we don't fix it, and we have these safety concerns, the only answer is to increase dues by $10 per month, which in a year's time is 120 bucks. Well, this member, this assessment here might only be $30 or $40, and if we can raise the assessments, and I'll ask Charlene a question in just a second, if we can raise the assessment, raise the hotel cost, nightly cost, then you know, we can get this on the back end and hopefully help in that manner. And I want to ask Charlene a question real quick. Charlene, what would be, do you have a number in mind that you would like to raise the hotel up to? Just kind of a blanket. There's six possible revenue sources, you know, per member, member guests, and non-member rates. Monday, you know, weekdays and weekends. So I have that broken down. That's an average of $75.43, and that comes out to an average of 1,433 stays. So 1,433 transactions, roughly. So what would be the dollar amount that we would, just kind of ballparking it, that we would expect to go up?
We were looking at an assessment if we did this, because one, if you notice, I'm here, it says phase one. That's not the only work that needs to be done on the motel, but.
No, just, if this work was completed, and you increase the rate, because we've, we've, And you increase the rate because we've, we've, we've shored up some of this stuff and the, the hotel is, the outside hotel is painted and it looks, but you know. Are, are you planning on increasing the rates? Cause I think we had talked about that.
Oh, yes, 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 ten dollars per, okay, yes.
So ten dollars per, so a seventy, a sixty-three would go to a seventy-three?
Yes.
So it'd be a ten-dollar average?
Yes.
So that'd be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. In extra generated, extra generated revenue in a quarter.
Yes.
So that kind of gives you an idea that, you know, we have to continue to make investments if we did go up ten dollars and not. This is spitballing. I don't know that that's what's gonna happen, but. If it just went up half of that, that's seventy thousand plus in generated revenue. So your forty thousand dollar investment is going to get us in, in potentially a quarter or two quarters. All that money would come back and this protects the association. Protects the association from the litigation standpoint. It protects the association in generating revenue. And it protects the association in the sense that you have more of a buffer for your assessments to not have to go up. So that's my position on it. I think it's a good idea. I think it's necessary and, um. Thank you all for being here.
I would really like to see a special assessment for the reserve study so we can make more informed decisions overall, not just for this one thing. And John's right, there wasn't increases in assessments over the years. And I'm not anti-assessment, uh, and increase and definitely not assess, anti-special assessment. We should have had a special assessment maxed out for the last two decades. And maybe some of these things would have been handled already. But if, if we use it up now, then when's the next time we can do a special assessment? Next fiscal year? We have to wait till October to ask for money again for the reserve study? Then, then it's gonna be another year or more before we even consider getting that done? Or is there another plan that someone has to get money for that? And if it's a safety concern, how much are the safety concern repairs? That will just get us to where the thing doesn't collapse and we can move on with our study and make more decisions like this. And it says phase one here. Well, how many phases are there? Maybe you can answer, but I think there's electrical and plumbing and I guarantee you that those are not gonna be less than what we're talking about here. So are we gonna do one every year for the motel for the next three, four years? I, I, there's a lot of questions I have on these things.
It's a good question though about the reserve. If we were to do the maximum, you can still do the hotel and you can still do the reserve study.
How much should the maximum, sixty-five dollars?
Sixty-five dollars and that would cover a reserve. And it would also cover the motel repairs.
That's sixty-five of membership.
Yes. We sat and talked, Mimo and I and Jason yesterday. Um, and, and we thought the, the most you could, um. It was ten percent. So if, that's the most important thing. The safety would be taken care of with the motel. And yes, there might be another phase. There are gonna be another phase because we do have to get the plumbing and electric done. Is that a safety issue right now? No, the safety issue is on the outside with the support beams, with the decaying wood. And all of that, that is the issue. We've been living with the plumbing and electrical. We still can. It does need to be done, but I mean, that's something to put out there about the reserve.
Have, have we gotten any quotes or, or estimates from any companies on what a reserve study would really run us?
So my, by. By looking at it online, a reserve study can run anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars. It's quite expensive, but it does, I believe, cover everything. And I know the board is on board with that because they've talked about it multiple times. So it is something that, that's on this.
Charlie, I, I know you've had a lot of experience in the construction industry. And we determined that when you were interviewed for this position. And I certainly respect that, but I'm not sure that I agree that the plumbing and the electrical. Problem with the motel is not also a safety issue.
And, and you may be right. I have not looked at it extensively. So you may be right.
I would think if we started getting estimates from legitimate contractors, they would say, oh, look at these safety issues you have with these nineteen forty capacitors in here. Or whatever, whatever we got in there, so.
Is there an urgency?
Well, if this is taking, yeah.
Well, we're not done yet, so.
I got it.
Hold on.
Yeah, we got people.
Regarding, uh, what Charlene and Jason are talking about in regards to the reserve study. Um, I think it's a beautiful idea. I think it's a beautiful idea, but. Uh, I don't have any education in engineering and architecture, but I can stand in front of the motel, Dickman Hall, or the admin building. Work needs to be done. It's very obvious. So, uh, spending thirty thousand or fifty, the fifty thousand on a reserve study. I think it's throwing money into the wind. Not saying it's totally a waste, but, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we've all lived here long enough to know what needs to be fixed. So. So that's a separate subject. Right now, we're focusing on the motel, phase one, and, uh, that's my two cents regarding the reserve study.
We're just regarding the fact that the reserve study is likely to get funding and grant money to do some of these type of things. So if we spent thirty, fifty grand on that, who's to say we won't get a fifty thousand dollar grant? We got fifty grand for the pool from T-Mobile without a study.
We're not here to discuss. I know that's a side issue, but. And we're also not here for us to debate between ourselves at this point. It's to talk to, you know, to let the membership ask their questions. I think we've given you, you know, most of the details so that, you know, you know what you can ask. If you'd like to start coming up to the microphone.
Okay, so this is about the hotel proposed, uh, repairs, uh, with a little bit of background. Um, first of all, uh, in this past week, I did contact an engineer I work with regularly on. New and historic structures who regularly goes to Marfa, works with Chinati Foundation, works on historic Adobes, et cetera. So they have.
So maybe you're too high.
So I was saying, I, I do know and have contacted an engineer that I work with a lot. Uh, either on historic and new construction. And they regularly go to Marfa, uh, cause they're working with the Chinati Foundation and they do other Adobe work. Out there in Marfa, so they pass through here and they know me and they know Marfa and. They're interested in knowing more about this place and they've agreed to meet with me sometime just to take a look, passing through. And then establish, see if, you know, they can help us. Um, and I say help us as in they told me they'd give some kind of discounted rate. Um, occasionally they do pro bono work depending on what it is, but point is, I could get a, a real engineer. Uh, who works with historic stuff to give some input. Um, whether it's on a level of sketch information versus full-blown drawings is, you know, what we need. And obviously, uh. There's no building inspectors checking the, the, the connections permits, et cetera. So that's, that's one thing. But two, uh, and this kind of affects the six-by-six posts that constantly need to be replaced. Beams.
They're not constantly replaced.
Well, that are getting, need to be replaced.
Now they do.
Right, so I, I don't know many beams that are six-by-six that, that cut the mustard. Or supporting a deck. Um, furthermore, uh, the one by tongue and groove flooring. Also, uh, supported at whatever twenty-four inches on center as it is, is not. That is less than what is considered normal. There's, there's a couple of issues going on here. One, yes, someone put three-quarter, or I, I hope it's three-quarter and not half-inch plywood down. Um, spanning twenty-four inches on its supports. And Tony's right, it is dangerous. You fall, you can fall through and it will be quick. It will not be a, you know, it's coming kind of situation. Uh, standard floor deck is one-on-one-eighth inch tongue and groove these days, uh, with two-by-twelve supporting it, but two-bites can work. So even a proposed one-by-four tongue and groove may not be substantial enough. It may need reinforcing, uh, support underneath it, which wouldn't take away from the look.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but, but the focus is not on who's doing the work or, I mean, we already have bonded. Um, so the question here is, is funding of the project.
I understand that this affects price, the price that is being funded. So my, my point is tongue and groove deck, although it may be historic. Traps the water, is why it rots, is why it doesn't last as long. Three-quarter deck simultaneously, especially with the sponge applied on top, which is what we currently have. Also soaks in water, becomes a hazard. So if you're considering a composite material, it's, one, composite doesn't span as far as wood. So it would have to bump up to two-by thickness, in which case you really should be pricing two-byes. Composite or two-byes treated and painted and gapped properly. They will not absorb water and rot like our current situations, but this affects pricing. And this is like normal stuff, um, that's easy for me to talk about. But it impacts our pricing and it, it kind of, it kind of needs to be known. Because if we go back and even if it's historically accurate to put one-by-four tongue and groove on there, it will rot quickly. It will have the same issues that it repeatedly has. And this is where I get to, how are we spending our money? On a solution that lasts longer, like composite versus, you know, not. But then additionally, the historic commission will have a say on what material is acceptable. They may not allow a composite material as a rebuild, in which case we're stuck with the, with. Either two-by-wood or if we have to do one-by-four tongue and groove. One, weatherproof it somehow so it doesn't rot. Two, it may need additional support. Three, the six-by-six beam, um, you know, it, it's likely would be dug for or maybe cedar if y'all could afford it. Um, but. Right, but, you know, the, an engineer might be like, well, let's make that a flitch plate, which is, you just run a piece of steel inside of it. It'll never be an issue. So the point is, there, there are more things in, in the proposal that need to be thought about, considered historically. With commission, whoever, whoever does that. Um, that's my point. And then the storage room, one last thing. When it comes to historic designation.
It's just an enclosure. It's not a storage.
I understand. So the, my point is, when it comes to anything exterior for any structure that's either designated landmark. Or even in a historic district, most often the rules are, uh, as long as it's not. Attached to on some way in the outside, so a skate around, if we're going to do a storage closet. May, maybe to have it under the stair, but may not have it to be incorporated where it's built into the stair. So it may have to like kind of support itself and be easily detachable. That's the standard rule. When I have to practice in Houston, we're like, well, you can do things, but it has to, we have to, if you're gonna add on to a building, it has to be totally removable. So the original can be remade. So that's just another consideration for how you do the storage structure.
Yeah, and I talked to Russell about that too. I was, I was worried that it had to go through historic. And so we, we did discuss it, so, okay.
That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. We don't need to get permission from the historical society to do anything on that building, do we?
Well, we have to stay within.
No, no, the colors, I know that, but we don't have to get permission from the historical commissions for what we're gonna do.
Well, I, I can't, I can't answer that a hundred percent.
It's no building, but it doesn't have a plaque.
No, but we want to keep it within. It still has to stay.
Do you know what I'm saying, right?
I would like to address a comment. Um, I have a few things that I, that I have. Uh, first of all, on the comment that it's not flagged and doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be approved by the historical commission.
Now, he was talking about the historical society.
And a historical society is not true.
The state of Texas, I'm sorry.
It's not true. Um, we were, we are on the national register. And, um, there is a. I've got a map of what all is included in that. And it includes flagged and non-flagged buildings and the, um. Motel. Past barracks is in that inventory of items that are. Under the Texas Historical Commission on the, uh, cause they manage the national registry of places. So whether it's flagged or not flagged, it's in the historical district. And I have a map somewhere. I've, I've, here it is. I've been looking at it. If y'all are interested in the map.
Yes, I've got one.
And it includes the motel. So anything in this historical district that's on the national register of historic places. Under the purview of Texas Historical Commission has to be. Approved through them.
Can you put your word there?
There was also, um. Being on the national register, we have, um. Access to grants through the Texas Parks and Wild, or the National Park, Parks and, uh. Wildlife or the National Park system. Uh, they have funding opportunities. They have tax incentives. They have restrictions and compliances. And they have advocates in partnerships. They have a lot of stuff that we could be accessing. I got, um, a list of, um. From the Preservation Initiative by the Fort Clark Springs Association. It starts in nineteen seventy-nine of things that have been done. And, um, they have gotten some grants in nineteen ninety-eight. They got a, a ten thousand dollar grant. And, and, um. And all of this, uh, on the resolution, there's a resolution policy that puts. The buildings under the purview of the, of the, um.
Sharon, can I ask?
Preservation Committee and it's in our revised declaration.
But this is for, what you're referring to is an alteration.
Not an alteration. It's not an alteration.
If we're repairing something.
It's, it's anything that's, that pertains, maintenance, repairs, alterations. Is put under, and there's a resolution to that, under the revised declarations and I have a. Uh, we, I can furnish you with that resolution. And, um, also. You're calling this a special assessment. Is this, is this for, it's not for capital improvement? It's. It's just a reg, regular, um. Resolution? Our, our specialist is just a regular assessment? Is that what you're saying? It's not a, it's not a capital improvement?
And, uh, I'm, can you clarify what you, what you mean? By, uh. Well, there's, there's. Special assessments and this restricted fund assessment.
Well, the restricted fund assessment is, is built into our regular assessment. Yeah, so this is.
There's two different things in your bylaw and there's two different.
Yes. Twenty-five percent of the, uh. Of the restricted money goes to preservation, yes.
So have we been putting twenty-five percent in reservation?
Yes.
Okay. But the special assessment is only necessary to pay for a deficit. In the association for fiscal year. So we're, we're doing this assessment to cover a deficit that we've been doing. Or is it a restricted fund assessment? That costs, that defrays the cost of capital improvements, reserves, replacements, maintenance and historical preservation. So which, which, which assessment are we doing? Out, it out of a reserve fund, out of the reserve fund budget?
Well, you know, we could pull it from the reserve fund. It would pretty much deplete it.
I mean, according to your definitions, that's where it should be coming from. If, if I'm reading this correctly, Tony probably could tell me the attorney lingo. But if I'm reading it correctly, it would be a restricted fund assessment. And on a restricted fund, um, the board could go up to twelve percent.
No, this is, the restricted fund is done monthly. Um, that twelve percent is done and added to the regular assessment. It's not a one-time assessment. It's just money that is set aside into the restricted fund, uh, for capital improvements or. Repair and maintenance. So, so the special assessment is a one-time, can be annual assessment. The restricted fund is not. The restricted fund is not, is not a one-time annual.
It says on the restricted fund, the board may levy assessments for the purpose of establishing a restricted fund to defray calls creating subdivisions, provisions for off-site improvement, capital improvement, reserves and replacement and maintenance and historic preservation.
That's in place.
And that's in place.
That is in place.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say, that's in place.
That's collected every month.
So just to, just to kinda give you some numbers here, in the restricted fund, there's roughly two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And a hundred and eighty of that roughly has to go into the thirty bond. And so we only have, you know, roughly a hundred and three thousand dollars in our.
No, not that.
We only have seventy-one thousand.
Seventy-one.
So, how does it go?
Well, how does, are you adding the fidelity in there?
Yeah, I think that's all of it.
Yeah.
I looked this morning. So would that be considered, uh, the maintenance of the debt service? The bond? Or?
No, but it's obligated.
It's obligated for T C Q. We have to have that.
We have to.
Right, but it doesn't say anything about it in the restricted fund.
The thirty bond? The thirty bond? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
We, we have to do that.
We have to do it, but does, but do we have to do it on the restricted fund?
I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know how it came to pass. That's the way it's always been done.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know how that applies to today regardless.
Yeah, and I, well, I think we're getting.
Trying to see why we're having to do this assessment. If we have, and also it says that we have a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in motel. Um, does that include the fifty thousand that's outstanding?
So, um.
Yes.
So you've already included money that we haven't collected yet.
It'll be in here supposed to be next week.
Sharon, I think that's a great question. Um, so I, I think maybe this is in the minds of everybody. I think maybe somebody, somebody told, I don't know, who told me something about, somebody put something about the E R C money. Okay, so also, but maybe, uh, Jason would present you with this information today, but we have north, just north of about eight hundred thousand dollars in our bank accounts. Okay, uh, in our general fund, uh, in, in, I think in fidelity, we have three twenty-seven and some operating capital. Uh, we have about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That's operating capital that has to stay in there for the, you know, in and outflow of all the accounts to pay employees and contractors and all that stuff. Uh, and then we have our thirty bond, we have a hundred, seventy-one thousand, whatever it is, seventy-one thousand in, in restricted fund. I don't, I hadn't really thought about it the way y'all stated it, because I, in my mind, I thought emergency. Uh, but you said safety, and safety is a lot better word to describe what's going on right now. We can't spend, in, in my opinion, as a business owner that deals with these kinds of numbers. Uh, in my opinion, our bank accounts should really never get below eight hundred thousand dollars, because we need money. We need money as a reserve for, in, in all applicable items through our accounts to account for something that may happen in the future per se, a, the T C Q comes out and says, hey, this cell is full, you need to get new cells built, and we know that's gonna be about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So if we start spending money out of here and not, and, and I, I've already kind of identified that we're way behind on assessments because of the increases in just taxes, insurance. So we're already, we, the associations are running out of deficit, and nobody's fault for a very long time. We need to protect the money we have in the bank right now, because we don't know the big bills that are coming. We can kind of see them and understand what they might be. But if we drain these accounts, uh, for the motel, for a dollar bill of fifty bucks per member on a special assessment, I, I, I think it's a bad idea.
Have y'all run the numbers of whoever runs the numbers to see that if we do this special assessment, since we can't do another one for a year, that this will cover what you're asking for?
Yes, they did.
It will exceed that by a large margin, but we're, we're not asking.
Okay, I can, I can answer that too, Sharon.
I haven't, I haven't run through the idea of, of the dollar amount being sixty-five, cause I thought when we talked about last time, it was like forty-two or forty-six.
Ran through some idea, maybe it's, it's not based on the amount that goes into the restricted fund, or maybe just on the part that goes into the general fund, out of the membership. So I don't know, the, the, the declaration is not super specific on math of what, of what.
Yeah, it's not clear.
So.
It will absolutely cover what we're trying to get accomplished.
I think it would be nice if we could have a financial report that, and according to chapter two oh nine, it is a requirement, the octopus with a current, I did pick up the, the January deal. But that would explain it a little bit better of why we need this assessment. And if that amount of money will cover the assess, this one-time thing will cover it with all the other things going on. Um, and also if you do approve, there's in section two oh nine, if you do approve, it doesn't need member votes. But if you do approve it, uh, according to chap- chap- uh, chapter two oh nine, uh, you're gonna need to provide the homeowners a written notice of the decision with payment instructions. So you're gonna have to send out.
Right.
Yes.
A written notice.
It's added cost. It's an added cost.
Yeah, and that's a pretty good cost. So is this assessment gonna cover sending out these notices too? Is that figured into what you're gonna be doing? I mean, I, I'd really just like a clearer picture. I'm not, you know, saying, we might, we might, I'm not saying we don't need it. I understand that there are special assessments, but I would like to know what budget it's gonna be, uh, put against. And that y'all have ran the numbers and know that if we do this assessment, we're not gonna be going in the hole before we can, and then you're gonna be doing another one. And I understand everything has gone up. And I understand that, that we haven't done any, raised our assessments or anything like that. But, and I keep hearing the safety issue, the safety issue. Um, have you, um, have, I haven't been out there, so I don't know. Um, have y'all put up a caution tape on the area that you don't want people walking on? That could fall through if we get a certain amount of weight up there? Is it, is it wrapped off with caution tape for that safety? If it's that dangerous and that much of a safety issue, um, I would think that we would need it to be with caution tape.
More of the safety issue, cause it's supporting the upstairs.
Right, but have, has the board sent somebody to, to section it off? So if we, you've invited us all to go look at it.
Just don't go at the same time.
If we go out there, have you cautioned it off?
So that we know. That would need a whole top of both buildings.
That we can't go up there and stand on it?
We don't know exactly where.
If a bunch of us go up there after this meeting, we don't know where to, we don't know if we go up there not knowing.
We'll know if y'all do it. It's very safe.
Because the caution won't.
Well, then we could go up two, three at a time, cause we've been up there with five people and it's been fine.
And has it been expended by a certified engineer like, um, um, Erin Garen said? You know, I mean, has it been issued and has it been designated as a safety issue by a certified engineer? Or is that just what y'all think by looking at how rickety it is?
Well, I probably, I've looked at it.
Rickety, I would think that would be a safety issue.
Yeah, I, I've looked at it and I, I've built many houses in my life. I've restored many houses. Been in construction since before I could walk pretty much, and it is a safety issue. I mean, that's a good way to describe it. It's rotten wood and what you said, Erin, about, uh, sport and the distance between the one by fours. We've had that conversation at least three different times. So that, the, the, I think the bid was originally forty-seven, some things have changed. But her and I had a conversation yesterday about where we're trying to find a specialized one by four. Because, uh, as you probably well know, uh, longleaf pine forest, we're gone a long time ago. That's where it used to be up there, and it was, it wasn't flats on. It was a lot stronger than the wood is today. If you use number two yellow pine or number one, the growth rings on it or so far apart, it gets rotten. It, it, it rotten five days. So we've already had many of those discussions, where now the composite discussions are coming in. And we've talked about sistering between the beams, which is about the only way you could fix it, uh, from the bottom. Uh, would be to sister between the beams and add a little bit more support with two by six or eights. And, uh, and, and do those spacings that you're talking about. So yes, we've had those conversations and we've talked about not using the yellow pine. It's just too weak. It won't, i- it's, they used to slope those, those porches at about two percent on almost every historic home. Cause all the, all the ups or, all the upstairs porches, uh, were exposed. It had screened in porches. And so the water was designed to hit them and run off of them. And, uh, but, uh, it also over years added to rot, and you, you just couldn't, you couldn't prevent that. So yes, we have discussed, um, trying, remember, we had a discussion yesterday about trying to find a specialized wood. There's a company in San Antonio that does it downtown, uh, that would be a lot more hardy and withstand that, but not violate uh, what's currently there. You know what I mean, from that historical, historical perspective?
I, I didn't know if you also special treat woods, just saying.
Yeah.
So, and, and the point of this discussion is for, I mean, can we all agree that the motel needs to be fixed? I mean, obviously.
Well, we have worked at it, so I can agree to that. And I have another question.
Can I ask a question?
Why don't we ask people on the fort to build that are on the fort? Why didn't we ask the person who has done a lot of this preservation repairs and things like that? Why wasn't that company asked to bid on this project?
And who are you talking about, M, M K?
M K. They are bonded and they are insured. They live on the fort.
They sure do.
And we can, uh, and they're very familiar with doing work on the fort. And they are not gonna be charging us travel time, and they employ four or five people. The money would stay in bracket. Why don't we use the resources that we have on the fort? And, and ask for a bid?
Because I'm still waiting on a few bids that I've asked him to give me already, and I haven't gotten them.
That doesn't mean. Say that you didn't get one coming on there.
I have three bids.
So.
And just, just, just say, if you knew we were coming here today to talk about the hotel and the safety issues. And I'm gonna be a little stern here. I would have thought that most people would have looked at it before they came in here, so they could see what it looked like and have a good conversation about it.
Right, I should have. Um, but I have had, um, a couple of other people look at it and give me some feedback. I just wanted to look at it myself. And you asked me to look at the Texas, um, commission, historical commission. Uh, I'm waiting on an answer on the composite. I don't believe, uh, talking to Erin, that they will approve the composite. But he has mentioned whatever, some other stuff that needs to be used. And also on the power washing, I did get a reply back from him on that. Constance gave me that information.
And I have it too.
And you have it.
As well.
Okay, on the fact that you, you need to use camel hair brush?
Yes.
Okay.
I call.
And use Lube One Water?
Yes.
Camel hair brush? It's actually not for camels. But I thought we could shade those damn camels before Clark days.
Yes, we need to be going through them and making sure whatever we do, whether it's repair or, or whatever, and going through the architect committee, letting them not, not on the, okay.
Preservation and restoring.
Yeah, preservation.
We need, we need a grant writer. That's what we need. And we go, and we need to, there's some other people that wanna ask questions. We do go through all of the, 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 we talked to Russell. You know, when the work is gonna be done, we're not going to just say, okay, this is the bid we're taking it.
My very last question. If y'all agree to put this in effect without giving us the information that's required by two oh nine.
Well, you're making an assumption. I'm just saying.
I said if you do, um, there is a recourse on that, so. Yes, there is. And also, um, if you start this work, is it gonna be in the middle of Fort Clark days? Or is it gonna be complete, or is it gonna be started after Fort Clark days? It all depends on the process, you know, where we get, you know, in, in the materials, when they can start. I mean, that's five weeks. Yes, ma'am. So that is on the radar. I mean, the last thing we wanna do is shut down the motel, right? So I, I just suggest if it's not gonna be done, and it is a danger, that you put some caution type up there.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't come with a list of facts. Excuse me for that. Um, first of all, I have no issue with a special assessment to take care of things that need to be taken here on the fort. Yeah, because when you divide it among the number of members, I'm assuming they all paid them. I don't, my usage is. Okay, I'm here. So that's not my issue, but my issue, and I think the issue that a number of members have is we at large had no idea where our money goes. Um, okay, and, um, I'm not gonna go take a lot of time, et cetera, but I have one example that I have questions about, and that is, we made a contract to put in a new computer system, and I think that Jason's been working on that largely. But I also understand that we have a contract with that company for a monthly consulting fee, and how much is that fee?
It's, it's a completely separate company. It's not, it's not the soft, the company that provides the software.
Okay.
It's a, it's someone.
And what are we, what are we getting for that? What is it being, what are we getting?
What do you, what is, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh, that's, that's, that has nothing to do with, that's accounting. That is not.
Yes, I know, but the question is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's where some of our money is going. Yes, we have the questions, what are we getting for that money?
Well, I mean, I think we've, we've spoken about it quite a few times in the board meetings.
How much are we spending on it?
A month. Forty-one hundred dollars a month.
Forty-one hundred dollars, so that costs fifty thousand a year. And for that fifty thousand a year, where's our money going? What are we getting?
We do not have.
Accounts that are up to date, we get people managing our money that, uh, you know, they're gonna help us over time, make processes. They're.
It's allowing us to, to, um, not have to replace an employee, so it's taken the.
Well, that's great. These issues that can be taken care of with the new computer system that Jason.
No.
It's like, it's like, it's like taxes and controller, it's, it's.
We need to know these things.
It's all the.
Where the money's going, and then we feel better. I have no problem.
Yeah.
I, I will say, one of the benefits of this, um, one, we're not replacing an employee. So that money goes to a dedicated, um, delinquent, um, person that is gonna take care of all of our delinquency.
See, if you were transparent about that.
We just, okay, we just finalized that.
Yeah, okay.
Just recently.
Because, you know, the river goes around, we're paying, you know, close to fifty thousand a year for something that we're not getting before.
So we do, we just finalize that.
Yeah, we didn't even know that. No. Okay.
Yeah, let me answer your, your question about, uh, where your money's going. We, we had this discussion in executive session last meeting. We talked about special assessment and some of that, and then that's where this meeting is born from. Um, if, if we were gonna go work on the electrical per se, I don't even wanna know how much money it'd be. It'd be crazy. It'd be crazy amounts of money, but you wouldn't be able to see it. You wouldn't feel it, you wouldn't see it, you wouldn't even know anything happened. The thing would never change. And so when we were discussing this, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but when we were discussing this, I said this, if you're gonna do special assessments, in my opinion, as a member, from my perspective, I would want it to be on things that I can see. And, and that's the most used intersection in all of the fort, right there. Everybody comes in and out, they stop at that stop sign. In my opinion, as a member, I, I want, I want the hotel to not only be safe, but I want it to look good.
Well, I have no objection.
Yeah, and, and so I think special assessment shouldn't be for things that we can't, aren't tangible to the naked eye because of exactly what your concerns are. I, I, I think it need, they need to go for things that you can see and you can feel and, and they help the community because they're much easier, easily accepted when that's, when there's something tangible attached to it.
Oh, I think I can understand updating eighteen forty electrical.
I know, but I'm just saying you were built, you know what I mean?
Visible, yeah, yeah.
It's not visible, but I can understand that. I don't like electrical. Okay, and then, um, the other question, the other benefit thing I had was, and when you got the information from Travis, that's the kind of thing, is being able to look around, making sure that we are in a position to apply for grants, special funding, that we have access to everything that we're allowed to have as a historic district. And that's an important thing, and we have resources available on the fort that can be used with, can help. So you don't have to spend your time doing that, you can get the information. That's all.
Thank you.
Now, maybe I can walk back.
Good morning. I'm sure this is going to be repetitive. I hear a hearing. I have a hearing deficit, so I haven't heard anything. This has been put out for bids already.
Yes.
And you have accepted a bid.
We have not yet. Accepted. We have one that we think we would like to go with, but we have not accepted one.
Okay. So. The special. Assessment fee will be based on whatever company.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and two of them are really close and one of them is.
Way off.
Way, okay. Do you have a ballpark figure for this special asset?
You mean the, the monthly?
Yeah.
I mean, not the monthly, but the, the amount.
I'd just call it between forty and fifty thousand. Forty to fifty thousand.
Yes, there's a stop sign there, but it's not always the base.
Your retirement account will be good.
But uh, will this be a? One time assessment, a monthly? Okay.
Forty to fifty-ish.
Okay. Then monthly. Will.
Still stay the same.
No. Monthly, will you give? The homeowners. A statement. We collected this much money. This is where the fund began. This is what we have spent. This is what is left.
And yesterday we discussed opening a separate fidelity account and putting this money in there.
Yes.
Where it went and where it went.
I don't even think that would have been possible three years ago, but I think it's possible now.
We can track all of that and and make it available.
Okay, one more question. Will our maintenance play a part in this to help reduce costs?
Well, I can answer that. When I got the bids, um, originally on the bids, there was um, cost for um, porta potties. Um, one of the bids had um, installing fire extinguishers outside in cases. And then in another one was dumping uh, the roll off. So, one, I'm providing a hotel room to cut costs. Two, I'm providing the roll off as a big, they're the big containers that you dump the stuff in and we can put it, I believe, in our landfill, but I'll have Philip determine that. And then the fire extinguisher cases was a four thousand dollar um, fee, which I asked them to take out. Because my maintenance can do that. So I saved about six thousand dollars on the bids. Uh, taking those things out.
Okay, but that's not our maintenance.
They would install the fire.
I'm, I'm talking about. When it's time for the painting, when it's time. Can they do, our maintenance do that to help take on?
I don't have enough people to do that, no.
It's going to take away from what the maintenance does now, which is very. Tight anyway.
I mean, you have to remember Monday and Tuesday, all they do is trash pickup. That's two days every single week that that's all they do. And then they have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then every other week they have to clean the pool. So that takes two days to do. So. You can see.
Final question. Final question, I promise.
Okay.
Who is going to supervise this work? Daily, go and make sure it's being done like it's supposed to. You will have the spec. I'm assuming that whoever gets the bid will give you spec of, and what is the timeframe? To get this completed.
There, there's not a timeframe. I can't put that on somebody because there could be things that happen. Unexpectedly, it happens in construction all the time.
I realize that, but they give an initial.
They can give an initial, yes. Uh, we haven't gotten that far yet because we haven't picked a vendor. And we haven't discussed start and end yet because we are bringing it to the members. We are talking about it amongst ourselves. And then from there, once we decide, then we can set down dates, times, hopefully that we can.
And supervision?
Yes, so I will supervise because it'll be right there. Philip will also supervise as well, and I'm sure my wonderful board members who walk every single day will also go over there. And any volunteer that would like to come over and look at it as well and look at the progress. I welcome it.
Okay. In your initial email. You said this is phase one.
Yes.
There will be a phase two. Are we going to be hit with another assessment?
You may be next year.
I mean, it would be my hope that we wouldn't have to, but with the plumbing and the electrical, it's probably going to be rather large, but. If, if. You know, if we keep our pool and with the work that's being done now, you know, maybe we can generate it, right? Yeah, I can't, you know, but I can't promise.
But then maybe by then, maybe somebody that's a grant writer could help us. We could start on that now. Or some of that, and we won't have to do another special assess. I'd rather get a grant all day long, but I'm not a grant writer. But I know we do have some.
Oh, um, before, sorry, before you, Kathy's right behind you.
I was taught to raise my hands.
I just wanted to ask everybody in the back to, if you got a conversation you want to have, go outside. Just to answer kind of one concern, because I thought that, well, just a, I thought that she would have a uh, uh, she had a good question. I figured somebody might ask. Because until you get on the board, like you don't. You just get immersed in his, all the stuff that goes on. How many uh, maintenance personnel do we have now?
I, I have seven.
Seven or eight.
I have seven maintenance and I have two, three landscapers.
I, I believe, uh, like, you know, ten plus years ago, we used to have twelve or thirteen maintenance. And then we used to have five or six landscapes. So I think everybody, like, you got to kind of put that in your calculator. Uh, because. We really don't have the manpower to do it. So it's, it's a great question.
Yeah.
Or concern.
You're up, Kathy.
Okay. Because I always give maintenance, I always give maintenance, thank you, cards.
Thank you.
So there were eight last time, so we need Philip. If I got this right, y'all, I have three questions.
And I, I'm marking it.
This is kind of like off the wall or anything, but. Do we have much competition with the Allied Alibi Hotel? And do you guys know how much they charge to stay at that place?
No, but I, I do know that we've gotten some feedback that sometimes people will call the Alibi and. They're booking there and then they'll call us and say, well, you were rude and. We had no idea who they're talking about, but come to find out it was at the Alibi. So that's all I know. That's it, that's it. I don't know what competition or anything.
Google returns calls, so I don't know what their rates are, but anyhow, we have a better place to stay. One question. Okay. Two. You're dealing with the historical side of preservation society, what that is, okay, with these buildings and everything, yes, they should be preserved. Uh, you have down here something we call woolenized pine or whatever it is. Wally and I would have never used that. We go right to cedar. Can we do the cedar beams or the posts? Acceptable with the present, okay?
All right, that's what we have right now.
It'll be a little more cost, but yes, we can.
It lasts a little bit longer.
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, no, I said yes, yes.
Okay, that was my, because I don't know if you could. What we do is we get cedar and then we, we have a thing up north called Woodlife. And it's a perm, it's a preservative. We do all of our cedar with wood life, coat it, and then we paint it or stain it. We bought the house in nineteen ninety-four and it's still there. Not the house, but the beans and everything. We pay more, but it lasts longer. Okay, that's mine. Uh, Mammo's right, I think. I'm not really sure. I kind of remember it was either twenty or twenty-one. I don't think it was twenty-two.
Please don't say that. That Mammo's right.
I said maybe right. Okay. But I'm always wrong. And I think my notes at that time, I think it was thirty dollars for the special. Thirty-five. Well, hell, you've got good memory. If I didn't have a calendar, I wouldn't even know what day it was. Okay, I still don't understand all the thing with HOAs, neither does Wally, and a lot of people do. Okay. Can't the board just make a motion? And either pass it or not to raise the one-time assessment. This is not an annual thing. Right, and get it done, or because the HOA state, you have to put it on the ballot and then we have to vote for it.
No, we, the board can vote.
Forget about this.
Exactly. We're sharing information. We're being transparent.
All the boards don't have to share everything with the members or the owners or anything. You just go. And then explain it. Okay, I was a member of the call up for fifty-six years. My husband was, I'm, I'm getting off the thing, but. I would. Call it a cola. We have not done anything for the past, what, three years? Everything is going up.
Yeah.
And this is still one of the most inexpensive, affordable places to live. So that's my.
That's why I spoiled.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Randy. Big questions. Is there anyone else? Going back to my room. Curtis.
It seems like you're more concerned with budget. This gentleman is talking about life safety. You, you joke, joke around about not closing the second floors of these buildings off. You're not excluded from the life safety code or the NFPA. And he'll tell you the exact same thing, because I'm pretty sure he knows what I'm talking about. So. You can laugh and joke about it, but it sure seems to me, and it's just an observation, that you're more concerned with budget. The other thing that's not considered is what caused the rotting up there to start with, aside from the fact that it's exposed to the elements from the outside. Those through the wall air conditioners. Condensate right out. There's a ledger board along that wall that's not been addressed. You know, you're short sighted if you don't take recommendations from people like him, because he knows what he's talking about. You're proposing, just with your maintenance people, they're not your maintenance people, there are. You're proposing to just go back in there and do it just like it was. With total disregard of what.
I didn't disregard, Aaron, and I didn't say my maintenance people were going to do that. I said they would put up the fire extinguishers.
The cabinets. You didn't say how much those cabinets are going to cost. They're expensive.
They're sixty-nine dollars for twelve of them. Twelve times sixty-nine is how much?
They're, just regardless of what the price is, you just didn't include it in your conversation. You said you're going to back out six thousand dollars, but you didn't say what it was going to.
That's what the vendor was going to charge me.
I know that.
Okay, well, we could do it for five to six hundred dollars.
You didn't say that. That's all you had to say.
Okay, well, I'm, I apologize that. I didn't realize. I just said I took that money out. We could do it in-house, which would be, save us money.
It just seemed like if you're going back in there and if you don't beef it up. We're going to have, somebody will have this conversation down the road in just a couple of years.
Couldn't agree more. That's what's happened. Your concern is exactly what's happened for the last thirty years.
It was a fiasco. You're fixing a fiasco. It is just one of many.
Right.
One of many. You talk about plumbing and electrical in that building, you'll open up a can of worms that you can't. Robin tube situation on the electrical, and you think it's going to be hidden, you're going to have to open that plaster, plaster walls and ceilings. To even touch it.
A million bucks. That's what it'd probably cost to go through all that.
Prohibited.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, you, everybody agrees that there's life safety issues up on that second floor deck. In both those buildings. If you let that stay like that. You have no control of how many people go up there. Fort Clark Day is coming up. How many people are going to be in the motel? Who's to say they're not all going to stand out smoking and joking? And there's going to be fifty of them. Standing out there.
Please, please don't, um, you know, we do joke around a little bit, but please don't take that as that we don't take this seriously. That's why we are here. And that's why we're.
This is my perception. This is my perception, okay? I, I don't, I take this real serious because it is real serious.
It is.
We see on the news time and time again about the decks failing and forty or fifty people go in the lake or go on the ground and get killed.
Oh, absolutely.
This is worse than that because it's old. And what's worse than that, we know about it. So if you knowingly let people up there and it caves in, I don't care if it's three people or a hundred people. You don't have any limit signs up there telling how many people can be up there. You know, do we need to rent those rooms on the top?
That's why I'm hearing what you're saying.
Do we need to have those rooms rented right now?
No, we do not.
Okay, so why don't you let the motel pay for itself? Rent the bottom. Board off or. Uh, rope off the top. Until such time as it can be paid for, instead of done and us for.
Well, no, if we close off the top, then we are with their.
Okay, so.
That's why we're here.
And safety is a side, a side fact.
No, we can, we will do the special assessment and we can still rope off the top so we can get it done. So then that way we can open it back up to recoup the money.
I, I don't follow what you're saying.
I don't follow what you're saying.
Okay, if you open that top up, you're going to have to for Fort Clark Days, correct?
I don't have to. If it's a safety issue.
Maybe you can answer me, because she's obviously not going to.
All right, um, let's, if we could be respectful.
I'm him respectful. Y'all work for us. We don't work for y'all.
We're members and volunteers.
Thousands and thousands of hours right here. Nobody works harder on this work than this, than these six people sitting right here.
Well, us volunteers work hard too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm asking for information to make sense of what you're, what the information you're giving us.
Have you not heard the discussion and the emphasis on the safety issue? Do you know there's people out there that are saying that we're doing this now as some kind of strategy during the election? Of new board members. That's what, that's what we're dealing with, sir. And, and let me, let me say this.
About elections or anything else. I'm saying.
I'm not.
You have a life safety issue.
Okay.
That you're going, you're going to say, we're not going to address. If we don't get this money.
Let's agree on this. This is important to this board. It's important to the membership. We believe it's a safety issue. We believe, I'm. I was emphasizing this needs to be done. We can't let it continue in that condition.
Oh, I, I agree. Okay, I agree.
So let, let me, let me clarify. We don't need the agreement of the, of the members to do this assessment.
Yeah, it sounds like that's what you're going to do. I'm just saying you're, you're more concerned with budget than you are fixing it right.
Everyone did.
We are going to fix it right.
It doesn't sound like it. You're going to go back and do the same thing.
Well, we never said that, and I'm sorry that, that you.
That's what you're planning, that you talked about.
No.
No, sure, they have not said that.
Okay, let's just take it down and off. Treat her like that. Next person.
I wanted to, first off, Curtis Brown. Uh, second, wanted to ask a clarification question. I have heard individuals and I have heard memberships. When it comes to the special assessment. So I think that needs to be clarified because otherwise people are going to go, oh my gosh, what are we talking about? Okay, also, I appreciate the fact that y'all are here and you're trying to, to do the right thing. Um, I think also we've had some things kind of been conflated here. At right now, if I walk upstairs, I'm not going to fall through that decking. However, you are concerned that if we don't do something now. It's going to get to that point. So you're trying to be proactive. So this is not, we're not going to kill people if they go upstairs. But if we don't fix something, we could get to that position. So let's not, we're, we're looking at a safety concern, but it's probably not an imminent.
Thank you, Curtis.
Okay, so that's just what I'm hearing, and that's my clarification. The other thing I had asked for was, we do the special assessment, and let's say that it's going to be. Forty-five dollars. I just pulled that number out of thin air. I don't know what it is. I own three lots. As an example, what am I looking at?
Forty-five dollars per lot.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Doesn't anything do with your residential, just your, your base membership for the lot, so.
I just wanted that clarified because I've heard different, different terms used, and I think that at some point that will also come back and bite the board. Because somebody will say, well, you didn't say that, or you said this. So, thank you.
And that will be also forty five dollars per FRM, correct?
Yes. Elizabeth.
Good morning.
Good morning. Elizabeth Rogers. I think I probably get to supervise because I walk more than anybody.
Please do.
The job, I'm just.
We're gonna give you a clipboard.
I clipboard, I clipboard. Okay. I wanna ask a question to clarify. I trust you guys implicitly. I, I do. Much smarter and much more researched than I am about this. But I have been here since two thousand four and I've seen things done sloppily, but then they get done again and done again, memo, memo, and I've been here a while and. So that said, can you clarify, because I'm very interested? And why don't we just spend the extra money and do the reserve study? And get the information and get the engineering information and from the historical commission, so we know where everything comes together. How much would that cost us so we get all the information first so we could do it right?
Well, for this right here, um, because it's, like I said, not imminent, but it is, it is something that needs to be addressed. Getting grants or, or any of that kind of stuff is.
I'm not asking about grants, I'm asking about getting the study. How long would that take to make it happen? Because if we're working on professional peoples who do that work all the time. I know Mimo doesn't think that's important, but I've thought this whole community needed a master plan for years. And this is the beginning of that kind of idea, so we don't recreate the wheel all the time.
Right.
So what is, would it cost? I think Charlena mentioned an assessment. If we paid a, a bigger assessment, we could get it all done. Was that correct?
I, I, I did say that. We did the maximum. It is a possibility. That, that it could cover both. Because we, it's, it's not that we don't want the reserve study, but this was more imminent. We, that we still wanna do a reserve study.
But how imminent? Two months, three months? Could we get the reserve study first?
We don't know.
Oh, that, we don't know that. It would take months. More than three months to get the reserve study. But we could get.
Propositively almost imminent work done so we don't have legal issues.
Right.
And hurt someone or lots of people. And support what you guys are trying to do by improving, but it wouldn't cost us that much more than to have this reserve study. And hopefully maybe preservation architects included, so that then we would have some professionals' information. To move forward. So Charlena has everything in her, in her pocket. You have everything in your pocket from experts. Is, how much? Seventy five dollars? Would that get it?
I think the max is like sixty five.
Whatever the max, if, if they would pay for both of them, I'd be for that all day, but, but I think we need to separate out the two.
Okay.
The reserve study is not gonna solve anything.
I know, it's just gonna tell us.
And we still have, we still have a whole nother box over here of all the problems that have to be solved. And then the reserve study just kind of. And, and to my knowledge, every, all the research I've done on reserve study, it's not gonna be, uh, necessarily a bunch of engineered documents saying this is exactly what you need to do. It's an estimate on what it would take to repair back, or you know, restore, uh, a, 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 a compound area to original condition.
What would be included in that?
Well, everything. It would be, it would be, how much would it cost?
No, 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 no. Which building? Which area?
Everything. The entire encompassed area. Yeah. The entire sixteen hundred.
RV park and.
Everything.
Everything.
Roads, bridges, golf course, fence, everything.
Okay, I'm just gonna go on record. I'm all for that.
I am too.
Y'all are.
Yeah.
If we, if it costs me, and, and I'm probably gonna have a lot of people who think I'm crazy, but pay the money now or pay the money later. And let's get everybody equipped with information that we need so that, uh, there's a song that our estimate does. It's called Working on a World I May Never See. And so I'm about to turn seventy three. I probably won't see it, but my God, this place is a treasure. I mean, I, I'll loan somebody the sixty five dollars to pay theirs if they need it, you know, and my last question is this. Is there any way we can donate to this? I don't know how it works with an HOA. Can we donate an extra amount of money if we think it's that important? And where does it go? How do we do that?
For the work on the, um, motel that we're gonna do, we're gonna open up a specific, um, account just for that. And it's just gonna go right in there. So you.
What, what are we? We're not five oh one C three, so what is our designation?
We're just a Texas nonprofit.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can donate to you. I don't, I don't wanna check it out. So if I wanted to pitch in an extra hundred dollars, I could.
You sure can. Yes, ma'am.
Is that feasible to go through a.
You could go.
Historical or through community council as a tax write-off? Because some people go, oh, I'll give you a thousand bucks if I can get you a seat on it. I don't know.
That would be a big help because I'm, I'm on the assumption, based on my experience working here, that there's gonna be folks that are not gonna pay it.
Well, that was my last question. How are you gonna get it out of people who have reduced a pad? I mean, then you gotta go do collections.
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the process.
Okay.
If, if in a perfect world, perfect world. We have sixteen hundred and thirty one memberships and if you times that by sixty five dollars, that's a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Okay, well, I appreciate what y'all do. I wouldn't wanna have your job and I'm absolutely not carrying a good one around and talking over. But, but thank you very much and. When you're ready, Charlena, you know my number?
I do.
I'm the first donator. Let's, let's, let's make this place what it needs to be.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay.
I didn't wanna jump the gun. Is this though, can we only discuss hotel issues or what y'all been discussing or can I ask?
That's, that's, yeah.
That's the topic, yeah. If you wanna talk to one of us afterwards.
I just had a noise violations and if, and insecurity deal with any of that is all I was gonna ask.
Sure, you can talk to me afterward and I can, and I can chat with you, okay, sir?
Russell.
Run, Russell.
You take your time, Russell.
Russell, before you, I, I didn't even know you were here. I couldn't see you. Do we need to get the rubber stamp from the state of Texas to do this work? Are you aware of that?
Uh, I think there's some items that we need to contact them and get clarification on, just like Constance did about the pressure washing of the building. We need to go straight to the horse's mouth and get it from them, get it in writing, and we know this. Here's say, I heard this. This is not gonna work.
Okay.
We need to, Charlena needs to contact THC, say, we've got this building here, it does not have a marker on it. What are your recommendations?
Okay.
Not, it's not rocket.
It's not complicated.
Not complicated, not rocket science.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all for being here. I really appreciate it. And I think town hall meeting was perfect. That was perfect setting. When we got these kind of decisions like this, these kind of issues come up. I think this is perfect. I really appreciate y'all taking your time. I'm gonna relate to something that Tommy said back here in the early goings about this is not a brand new issue. I've got a letter with me here that I sent to the board in two thousand seven, twenty eight years ago. And it's talking about a project. And that particular project, some of you in the audience may remember, the walking track. Everybody remember the walking track when that come up?
Yeah.
This letter stated it was gonna cost five to six thousand dollars for the walking track, three to four thousand of it was gonna be donated. It ended up costing thirty two thousand dollars. So the fourth come up with the other twenty two thousand dollars. So we've had these bad decisions that we've made all over these years. And now it's come down to it and this board here has got to try to fix those problems. And, and you've got a mess on your hands. You really do. Uh, we're late back two years ago, we planted twenty thousand dollars worth of trees and we had a motel falling down. Bad judgment. Not bad people, not bad management, but just bad judgment. And it was not only the director of operation, but the board. The board allowed that to happen, so.
The motel was being worked on at the time, Russell. Mr. Peterson was working on the motel at the time.
Remodeling the rooms.
Remodeling the rooms. And, and that was the information we, because I was sitting here. That was the information that we were getting, that this is what we needed to do. So we've already invested large amounts of money in the motel.
Okay.
And now we're gonna do.
I, I.
Now a multiple phase.
One hundred percent, Mimo, I agree with you. But what we were doing, putting lipstick on the pig, we were remodeling the rooms and we went and fixing the structure on it.
And that's what I get for trusting you.
Yeah, that's what I mean. We, we made some bad decisions over the time and it's cost us a lot of money. It's down to you people right here. So what I would ask of you people is, let's try to draw a line in sand right here and, and stop these ridiculous decisions. It's costing us a lot of money. I mean, let's just, let's get back to the foundation. We're trying to put a brand new roof on a house that's got a rotted foundation. Let's build our foundation up and then go from there. I agree. The assessment, we have to do the assessment, so be it. Let's do it. But let's look at some other means for the money too. Preservation and restoration. Lisa and I had a conversation just yesterday about that, that they feel the restricted fund there is for buildings, historic buildings with historical markers on them, uh, entirely. That's not entirely true. If you go back and read the resolution, it says historic buildings owned by the association. And in the restricted funds there, it says the same thing in there. It does not, does designate with one, with the historical marker. And there's already been a precedent set with the commissary building. Two years ago, three years ago, the preservation restoration paid fourteen thousand dollars to have the woodwork done on it and have it repainted, did not have a marker on it. So you've already got a precedent set that you're doing buildings without markers on them. So.
Okay.
Look, you know, I'm sure they can't afford all of it. I mean, they can afford a third of it or a fourth of it to lighten that load. Let's look around for some monies instead of just, you know, keep throwing our hand out.
And if I'm not mistaken, MK Builders were the ones that did all the fourteen thousand dollars worth of restoration at the commissary, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Thank y'all. And I really appreciate the job y'all are doing.
Thank you, Russell.
Thank you, Russell.
You know, and I wanna say, you know, I, I completely agree with Russell. Um. I think all of us here, that's part of, 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 of our goal since we got on the board, was to not keep making these, to do our due diligence. To, to get, you know, good certified vendors, to check with historical and the historical, uh, commission and, and not just throw paint on something or, or put up a board. We don't want to do that anymore. So, and I think I can speak for the rest of the board on that. Um, do we have anything else? Or should we all go out and enjoy the day?
I have just one question.
Is it on this topic?
Because she mentioned, though it's on this topic. You talked about the billboards, your book.
Okay, we're not talking about.
No, I know, but I think you ought to consider, if you're gonna put up a billboard, it should say, open to the public.
We've already noted Bill.
Good.
I'm already wanting on that.
It's our bill.
And I had one other thing I could say, now it's gone. So you guys lucked out. No, I can't remember it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming and sharing your concerns. Um, we really appreciate it.
Just let us know.